To bring this session of Clear Lake City Council to work at 6:00 PM. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Perdok?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sluton?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Okay, will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? The mayor's oath of allegiance is a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you please stand in for the indication? Ms. Bion? Not here. Okay, councilman Perdok, would you lead us up here for the sermon?
Heavenly Father, we ask and invoke your spirit to be with us tonight, that we could do the good work of the city, that you would be with us and help us and guide us in our decision making tonight. We ask you to look over all the good folks and families that are here in our city and help to keep us safe. We are so blessed to have you in this holiday season to honor the date of the Savior's birth, and we say this in his holy name. Amen.
Thank you, councilmember Perdok. Okay, as always, all items on the agenda will be open for public comment before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into record at the public meeting on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the city clerk prior to the meeting date, so the material may be distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments to items that appear on the agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. The mayor, myself, has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. As a courtesy to others, please turn off your cellphones, which I just get, and other distracting devices. Okay, first thing, adoption of the agenda. Are there...
No modifications.
Second question. A motion made by councilman Overton and seconded by, there was a tie between councilmember Harris and councilmember Perdok. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Announcement of any action, close session.
Annual reporters.
Thank you, Ms. Hodgston. All right, we'll go right on to our first presentation, and I see he's waiting there in the doorway, in Clear Lake Animal Control of December's adoptable dogs.
Tonight, we have Blue here, and he is a three-year-old male, and he is a, probably a lab hit mix, and he is currently neutered and is current on his vaccinations, and he is microchipped. He likes people, obviously. He was in there socializing earlier in front of the Christmas tree. He likes fetch, walks, and car rides. For further information, you can contact Clear Lake Animal Shelter staff at area code 707-273-9440, or to see him in person, you can visit the shelter at 6820 Old Highway 53 in Clear Lake, Monday through Friday from 12 to 4:00 PM.
Thank you. I was actually out there this afternoon and petting Blue. He is, he's a sweetheart.
He is really sweet.
Great, Sergeant Hobbs, Lieutenant Hobbs?
Good evening, councilmembers. So far this year, we have taken 440 dogs into the animal shelter, 211 have gone out for rescues, 96 have been returned to their owners, 55 have been adopted, 51 have been euthanized. So overall, our live release rate for the year to today is 88.5%. So we're still staying pretty close to the no-kill status.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
You're welcome.
Okay, he's gonna go past, if you're interested, you can find him there. Okay, we're gonna move on now to the presentation to our, to our former planning commissioner, Natalie Cantus. Natalie, come on up. Natalie was actually on planning commission when I first went on it, and she's been on since 2015 to 2019, and has done a great job for us. We, even though I did my hardest to try to talk her into staying, she needed to move on. So Natalie, this was with great appreciation from the city of Clear Lake to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay?
If I might make a comment, thank you, Natalie. I've been working with you for four years, and I think we came at the same conference. So thank you very much. It's always a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
And we're gonna miss you too, young lady. Okay, then we'll move on to the presentation by First Five of Lake County State of Our Children.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much, mayor, city council members, city staff, for giving us this opportunity tonight to present this information to you. In my role as executive director...
Can you tell us your name?
Yes, I can. I'm Carla Ritz. I'm the executive director for First Five of Lake County. In my role, I'm daily confronted with tremendous needs and challenges that are facing our children and their families. But I'm also daily rallying shoulders with people, organizations, and programs that are working hard to meet those needs and challenges. Even with so many tremendous programs and services available to families, the data on outcomes for our children is discouraging, and it's deeply concerning. And today, I'm here along with some community partners to bring awareness, first of all, to some of the most concerning childhood outcomes in our community, to advocate for a greater emphasis on primary prevention, and to request that the city of Clear Lake partner with us in 2020 to bring these issues to the attention of the Clear Lake population and hold a town hall on children's issues and prevention. The report on the state of our children, which you have, along with supporting materials, as well as the website we created at stateofourchildren.org, are the results of collective input over the past 10 months from leaders and staff at a variety of county agencies and programs. Some of them are here with me tonight, and I'm gonna read the list of our partners, and those of you who are here from those organizations, if you will stand when I read the name of your organization, remain standing until I finish. Lake County Probation, Lake County Office of Education, Lake Family Resource Center, Lake County Departments of Child Welfare and Social Services, Lake County Public Health, Redwood Community Services, Lake County Children's Council, Court-appointed Special Advocates of Lake and Mendocino Counties, Redwood Coast Regional Center, Lake County Tribal Health, Adventist Health Clear Lake, Motherwise, Lakeview Health Center, Easter Seals of Northern California, North Coast Opportunities, and First Five of Lake County. Thank you. Tonight, you will hear very briefly from Dr. Gary Pace, who's the public health officer for the county, on the state of our children's health. You'll hear from Brock Falkenberg, superintendent of schools, on the state of education, and you'll hear from Amber Davis, who's the deputy director of social services for child and adult services. You'll also hear a local success story read by a student, and some final summary comments from me. We hope that the information that we provide you with today will help you to join us in our sense of urgency about the state of our children and in forging a path forward. I would like to invite Dr. Gary Pace to his podium now.
Thank you for allowing us to present here this evening on this very important topic of the health of our children. My name's Gary Pace. I'm the new public health officer of the county, and while I've only been in Lake County for a few months, I have been a practicing family doctor in Mendocino and Sonoma counties for over 20 years now. My goal today is to give a little bit of perspective on the importance of preventive health for the well-being of the children of Lake County, and I also want to commend the excellent work that Carla and her colleagues at First Five are doing to raise the awareness of the importance of primary prevention for the children. As you know, there are challenges to keeping our children healthy in Lake County. Poverty, histories of trauma, substance use, housing insecurity, and difficulty accessing primary and specialty healthcare are all contributing factors. The recurring fires over the last few years have made it even more difficult, and when there's a crisis in the family or in the community, preventive care can often be postponed. But one thing we know in the public health world is that putting some effort into prevention can help both to save money and to prevent some misery down the road. Whether the prevention is helping ensure that children have enough to eat, that they are living in violence-free homes, or that they are able to get their immunizations, these all can help them to stay healthier and to become more engaged citizens when they move into their teens and later. Clearly, our responsibility and our hope is to expand the programs that will make it more likely that our young people will thrive. So just a brief overview of some of the data that's in the State of Our Children website, and also is on HopeRisingLC.org, which is the county website that's got a bunch of the health data. Early prenatal care, which is a marker for getting the children off to a good start, about 70% of the women in the county received prenatal care in the first trimester, and 30% did not, and this was 45th out of the 58 counties in California. Breastfeeding, starting in the county, was above average for the state. Fetal alcohol and drug exposure was a fairly high percentage of women who were noted to have a substance abuse diagnosis when they were pregnant. Smoking in pregnancy was four times the state average. So some of the other kind of data that's interesting to think about is fifth graders had a healthy weight, 57% in Lake County, which is about the same as in California. Seventh graders who were physically fit, 50%, and this was lower than the California average. Teen birth rate is about 50% higher than the California average. So there's a specific to Clear Lake. Smoking rates at Clear Lake High School for ninth and 11th graders was about 25%, so 25% of the kids were, had admitted to smoking. And current alcohol and drug use in Clear Lake High School was about 40%. Just a few other brief things. The social determinants of health, which are getting a lot of attention now, insurance, almost all the children in Lake County have health insurance, which is a great thing. About 30% of the children in Lake County were estimated to be living below the poverty level. 60% of Lake County children were below two times the poverty level, which is kind of a typical marker we use for some of this. And a little over 50% of the children in Lake County were living in single mother households. So, you know, these, many of the social and economic factors that are present in the area can cause a lot of stress, and these show up in increased behavior and health problems. Carla and First Five's efforts to modify some of these stresses and to amplify the ability of the children, families, and educational system to cope with these issues is admirable. The idea of having a town meeting is something that we would completely support, and I would like to encourage us all to build on the good work that is already being done in the county so that we can improve the health of our children moving into the future. Thank you.
Brock Falkenberg, Lake County Superintendent of Schools. Before I begin my presentation, I wanted to make three foundational statements that really are the premise for what I have to say tonight. First of all, studies show that the key to addressing the long-term vitality of any community is through its youth. Secondly, education and its related outcomes are an important part of every child's development. And thirdly, our schools are staffed with terrific teachers and caring classified staff. These are all hardworking, dedicated individuals, and they are effective. However, the State of the Children report does indicate that we have a gap when it comes to academic achievement, and that is a gap that exists kind of wide. We have to acknowledge that, and we cannot ignore it. What the study does not show is that we are experiencing improvement in our educational statistics over the last four years. Our test scores are improving, our third grade reading rate is improving, our status is improving, and this is in spite of the fact that for the last five years, we have, most of our school districts have not experienced a full academic calendar. But this pace is not enough. As a group, our students start school already behind. One of our local districts, Kona Unified School District, has a slogan that they have on the front of all of their doors as you enter. It just says "One Plus." And I don't know if you know what that means. They have that as a reminder that for each year of enrollment, they need to see their students grow, more than one year of academic growth. So what we need to do is we need to do more than our surrounding school districts and our more affluent communities, and we need to do it faster. The gap is wide, and we need your help in closing that. We need the community to buy into the fact that youth are the key to the future vitality of this county. We need to have the community buy in to the fact that school is important and graduation matters. I'd like to share with you a fact that is not in the report. When I do a comparison of student attendance rates for students in grades one through three, I find that Lake County has the lowest attendance rate of any county in the state of California. Now, this isn't a measure of high school students choosing to cut class. These are five to eight-year-olds. These kids are prevented from coming to school by parents who are unable to get their kids to school each and every day. Poverty, adverse childhood experiences, generational trauma, homelessness, absentee parents, addiction, et cetera, are just some of the barriers to success that we must all come to collaboratively work together on. James Heckman is a Nobel laureate in the area of economics. He studied early childhood education from an economic perspective, and his findings determine that every dollar invested, I think it's important to use the word "invested," in early childhood education programs generates a 13% return per year investment. Now, if I play a little loose with that statistic and I compound that over 18 years, that's a tremendous return on our investment, and it's certainly an investment that I want to make. Here's my attempt at a joke, and it's not subject to swings in the stock market. By leveraging the resources that we all bring collaboratively, we can address the fundamental needs of our youth today, and we can assure the social and economic vitality of our county and our communities in the future. The schools and our staffs are committed. We're here tonight to ask you to please join us in working to support the needs of our youth and the future of this county. So, thank you for your time. I'd like to introduce Amber Davis of Child Welfare Services.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk this evening. I'm Amber Davis, and I'm the deputy social services director for children and adults, and I'm here to discuss the safety and security of children in our county. Some of you may have heard about adverse childhood experiences, often called ACEs, and ACEs are traumatic events that occur in a person's childhood. Examples of ACEs are experiencing violence, abuse, neglect, death of a loved one. ACEs can also be environmental, such as things that undermine their sense of safety and stability, like natural disasters or lack of stability in their home, lack of food over time, or even the separation of a parent due to incarceration. Adverse childhood experiences have been linked to risky health behaviors, chronic health behaviors, low life potential, and even early death. As the number of ACEs increases for an individual, so do the risks of the following outcomes, which are severe depression, anxiety, alcohol and drug abuse, unintended pregnancies, lack of education, occupation, income, STDs, cancer, diabetes, or abuse and neglect. In 2018, Child Welfare Services received 925 referrals for suspected abuse or neglect. Of those, 117 substantiated victims of child abuse or neglect, and of these, 77% of them were for general neglect. As a result of the substantiated referrals, we had 73 children enter foster care through Child Welfare Services in 2015. Also in 2018, there were 336 youth who were arrested by various law enforcement agencies in Lake County. 154 of these were placed on probation. 71% of them were men. At any one time, there is an average of six youth in juvenile hall, which I'm not sure if you are aware, is now housed in Toquay County, which is quite a distance from home. Of the 154 youth on probation, nine were in foster care as a result of their actions and instability in their home. So it's depressing statistics, but why is it important to know this? It's important because we, as a community, can help reduce the risk of families becoming one of these statistics. It starts by understanding the effects of trauma and learning about the protective factors. Protective factors are things that help strengthen families. They are about parental resilience, social connections, knowledge of parenting and child development, concrete supports in time of need, and social and emotional competence of children. These factors can mitigate and even eliminate risk in families and communities, thereby increasing the health and well-being of children in our community. They promote skills, personal characteristics, knowledge, relationships, opportunities, and these all can offset risk factors caused by ACEs. It allows families to be resilient and to be able to negotiate difficult circumstances, which will help them fare better in school, work, home, and overall life. Child Welfare Services and the probation department are dedicated to working in this community to guide and teach families about protective factors as an intent to improve their well-being and help them have a long and healthy life. We hope that you join us in this endeavor.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Jeremy Frederick. He's a current foster youth advocate in our county and a former foster youth. He's going to read one of the success stories that is available on the State of Our Children website of folks in our, in our county who are overcoming and beating the odds.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Fredericks. This is the success story of Allison. Allison was placed in foster care at the age of 18 months. A Lake County foster family picked her up at Children's Hospital in Oakland on Christmas Eve. She was covered from head to toe with bruises and lacerations and was suffering from a concussion in a lacerated liver. She had been exposed to both drugs and alcohol in utero, and at 18 months old, her ACE score would have easily been six or seven. The Scotts adopted Allison when she was five years old. Allison is now 18 years old. If statistics ruled her outcome, Allison would have dropped out of high school, been using drugs and alcohol, and experienced, been experiencing a teen pregnancy. But Allison is now a strong young woman that has overcome many obstacles. School has never come easy for her, but she worked hard and will be studying at San Jose State this fall, pursuing a career as a pediatrician. There was three questions that were asked. The first one was, what would you tell other children and young adults in Lake County about what is most important to your success, and how would you encourage them? In her words, she said, "I would tell other children and young adults in Lake County that having perseverance with anything and everything will lead to success, so see it through to the end and don't give up. I would encourage them by showing them that they can be who they want to be. Your past does not define you, it will always be part of you, but you do not have to let it define you, be you." The second question was, what kept you from giving up when things were hard? Her response was, "Waiting to be a success story kept me from giving up when things were hard. I want to be part of a narrative that inspires other people to overcome what they have gone through and not let their past define them." The third question was, what are you most looking forward to as you leave for college, and what makes you feel mostly equipped to take this next big life step? Her response was, "I am looking forward to finding out how I can become involved in bettering the foster care system and being able to help or inspire other children who have gone through something similar. I feel most equipped to take this next big life step because of my mother's involvement with the community here in Lake County. I hope one day to make a difference as she has." Thank you.
Thank you.
And he came over from his lunch break at work to do that, so thank you so much. I'm just gonna give you some closing comments, and we're open to any questions that you may have. If you were to compare Clear Lake to a beautiful older house in need of some repair, it would be easy enough to identify a broken window pane, or missing roof tiles, or peeling paint, or water damage, and we could acknowledge the difficulty of trying to live in a fixer-upper and while still maintaining daily life, and rolling up our sleeves and getting work done, tackling those projects one at a time as the budget would allow. But what if one day, we became aware that there's damage to the foundation of the house that's compromising the structural integrity of the entire dwelling? Which improvement project would take priority, then? The foundation must take priority. Our children, the next generation of Clear Lake citizens, are the foundation of its future. The types of negative outcomes that you've heard tonight, that our children are experiencing so early in life, are clear. It's a clear signal that our foundation is damaged. We can't afford to keep living and tackling our honey-do list of worthwhile community projects while ignoring the need to reinforce that foundation. In the success story that we shared, we heard how the Scott family worked together to reinforce the foundation of Allison's life, and they did so very early in her life. And because of their early intervention and ongoing love and support, she's thriving. It is certainly the responsibility of each family to care for and nurture their own children. But when you see that half of our children are entering school without the skills that they need to succeed, and that our beautiful little community is outpacing the state averages in perinatal substance use, child maltreatment, youth substance use, and the prevalence of poverty, you know that our foundation needs shoring up, and that it will be an all-hands-on-deck kind of job that needs to start immediately through increased prevention efforts that keep the cracks from developing in the first place. There are three levels of prevention. Primary prevention involves intervening at the general population level before negative outcomes ever occur, promoting those protective factors, and decreasing or eliminating risk factors for all families. Secondary prevention targets those at highest risk for negative outcomes and proactively provides extra supports. And tertiary prevention involves early intervention, when negative outcomes have already occurred, in an effort to prevent recurrence and minimize damage. There are many agencies and organizations in Lake County providing secondary and tertiary prevention, but primary prevention is significantly lacking, and we believe the first step in that direction is raising awareness and providing education within our community. We would like to invite you to partner with us in 2020 in four ways. Number one, by providing one or more opportunities within the city of Clear Lake to bring the state of our children to the attention of Clear Lake's residents, and together look for ways to elevate the importance of prevention together in creating a solid foundation for the future. Adding the Clear, number two, adding the Clear Lake City logo to this project and this effort, and showing up as a true partner in the work. Number three, we'd invite you to attend as many Children's Council and Resilient Lake County meetings as you can. This is where the work is being done. This is where the plan is being created. Number four, we'd ask you to consider what you can do personally, in your own family, in your own sphere of influence, in your neighborhood, in your city, to promote primary prevention. We are here today to answer any questions you have, and we'll be here in the future to roll up our sleeves and work together on these issues, these, all of these issues with you. We just thank you again for your time, for all that you do for our community.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilmen?
If you could provide us with your meeting schedule, that would be great.
What would be the best way to do that? Do you know that? The Children's Council meets quarterly, and the Resilient Lake County Committee meets monthly, so we'll send both of those to the city manager.
I'm sure they will figure out somebody who definitely supports your efforts. Thank you again. Any other questions? No? No? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on now to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address city council on any matter not on the agenda that is within subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Hopefully you have completed, I haven't, we haven't received any speaker information cards, but we won't hold you to that. The Brown Act, however, will, with limited exceptions, does not allow the staff or council to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. Council cannot take actions on non-adjourned items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Please note, the comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments shall be limited to three minutes. With that said, is there anyone that would like to make public comment? Yes, sir. One up. Please state your name.
My name is Gene Hebert. This is with regard to code enforcement. I know it's not on the agenda. I've never been to one of these meetings before, so I didn't know any of this. I did know it'd be limited to only three minutes too, but I'll try to make it as rapid as possible with your indulgence. I'm a seventy-year-old Vietnam veteran who's been a part-time resident in Clear Lake since nineteen sixty and a full-time resident since two thousand and four. In two thousand and seventeen, my house is, was one of the first ones built in the entire area that I'm in. It was built several years before any others, and unfortunately sits on a very small lot with the boundary line being about ten feet from my front door. In two thousand and seventeen, a new neighbor moved in next door to me and built a fence right outside my front door taller than the roof on my house, taller than my porch roof, blocks out the sun, and in effect turned my house into a cave. I filed a complaint with code enforcement, first of several formal complaints and many informal complaints and phone calls. At my request, the head of code enforcement at the time, Lee Lambert, came out to my house, noted the fence was too high, and placed a notice on the fence informing the neighbor that the complier be fined. Nothing happened. In January of two thousand and eighteen, I called code enforcement for disposition of my case and found that my paperwork was lost. I filed a new complaint and waited, being absorbed with the matter of shoulder surgery and rehab. My neighbor subsequently began building a taller fence. Again, I filed a complaint, you know, in June of two thousand and eighteen. I called code enforcement to file, find that my most recent complaint in January had been canceled in March. No one knew why. I had the file reopened. The head of code enforcement at that time, which was, I believe Lieutenant Hobbs, sent Mr. Lambert out to my request, at my request again. I heard nothing for several months, and when I called code enforcement in November, I was told my case had been closed all of a sudden and was now considered a civil matter and that I should take it to small claims court. In March of this year, after many frustrating months of dealing with this, I became fed up with the sight of many warped, disconnected boards resembling an old barn right outside my front door. In a fit of rage, one day I pulled several of the offending planks off the fence. My neighbor came out, called the police, but before they arrived, he told me that code enforcement in Clear Lake had told him that as long as the fence was quote "neighbor-friendly" end quote, which meant that the exterior was vertical planks, he could build it as tall as he wanted with no limit at all. The police, police subsequently arrived and listened to absolutely nothing I had to say. And even though the only thing I've ever done against American society was a speeding ticket when Jimmy Carter was in the White House, I was treated to a ride to Lakeport, forty-five minutes with my face in the carpet and my hands behind my back. I spent the night in jail. To date, my legal expenses have exceeded six thousand dollars. The day after my release, I filed another complaint, but it has now been classified as another civil matter with, again, the ludicrous suggestion that I take it to small claims court, which is about money, not height. After all these months, nothing has changed. I brought copies of everything, including pictures, but I, I didn't know that I had to pre-submit this stuff or I would have done it. My case, I've been in court since March of this year. On November fourth, the district attorney dismissed my case, suggesting that they, that I had done nothing wrong. And the district attorney's office, district attorney herself, I think, told my, my attorney that they get it, they understand what happened and why, but that they couldn't allow people to take the law into their own hands. I had to subsequently attend, as a condition of my, my disposition on this case, a life skills course, which consisted of forty-five-minute phone conversation with a counselor in Fresno, and I paid two hundred and eighty-five dollars for that. Two days ago, to get copies for you folks, I went to code enforcement and was told that my most recent complaint filed the day after I got out of, out of jail had also been considered a civil matter. In retrospect, I had the, the city attorney said that, yeah, they get it, but we couldn't have people taking things into their own hands, the law into their own hands, which is why they sent me that course. They said, "We couldn't have people doing that because," as she said, "we have codes and laws." That's right, isn't it? I just don't understand how something with a six-foot fence limit from the city, city limits of Clear Lake, mine in some cases, my picture shows more than nine feet tall. You know, all I would suggest, if you want to know how I feel, is before each of you walk into your door tonight, turn around and see where you come from, and if you see something that resembles an old barn higher than your roof and extending from one end of your property to the other, you'll know how I feel. This is not a civil matter. I don't, I've talked to everyone possible. No one at code enforcement can give me any information. They've already lost my files on at least one occasion. I get no satisfaction, but every time I go out my front door, I see it. This is my last resort. I don't know who to submit paperwork to after this. If I can have a suggestion, I would be eternally grateful.
We can't comment, but...
I can take your paperwork.
I have copies.
I have five copies made. Pardon me. I'm bringing this up.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your indulgence. Merry Christmas.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the council or audience requests otherwise, or a staff has requested a change in or adoption of the agenda, in which case item will be removed for second consideration. Any items so removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes or requests? Council, do you have any? Public, do you have any requests anything to be removed? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm taking a motion to accept the consent agenda submitted.
A second? Motion been made by Councilman Purdock and seconded by Councilman Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Now move on to business. Consideration of the annual calendar of meetings and to change the meeting dates by resolution number twenty nineteen dash fifty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Swanson will present the staff report on the side of...
Okay.
Honorable Mayor and council members, as you know, the city has contracted with Jones and Mayor for city attorney services for several years. Ryan Jones has been the city attorney since the contract began in two thousand and fifteen. City Attorney Jones has recently been assigned to another city to appear at their council meetings the same night as the Clear Lake City Council. In City Attorney Jones's absence, deputy city attorneys have been attending the meetings. If your council wishes to continue City Jones's services at the council meetings, the dates of the meetings would need to be moved to a different night. If this is the direction of the council, staff proposes holding council meetings on the first and third Thursdays of the month. Due to the New Year holiday and the need for staff to prepare for the proposed changes, if that's your direction, we recommend beginning the changes in February of two thousand and twenty. Additionally, if the council moves forward with the proposed date changes, we would need to bring forward an agenda item at the next meeting to propose changing the planning commission meetings to the second and fourth Tuesdays. Alternatively, the council could continue with having deputy city attorneys attend the council meetings with City Attorney Jones assisting staff and council in all other matters. So that's what I have, and I can answer questions if you have some.
Questions from council? Questions? Public, do we have any questions or comments with regard to this resolution? State your name.
John Jensen, I'm a resident of the firm, but regularly attend these meetings. And there are probably others like myself who have commitments currently on this selected Thursday dates. So this may throw turmoil into many, many of their lives as opposed to one.
You state your name, although we all know it.
Not everybody, no. Denise Lustelow, business owner, city of Clear Lake. I sat when we were looking for Mr. Jones. He's a perfect fit. He's spent a lot of time learning our community and building relationships with not only council and staff, the community. I think it's imperative and important to continue that one-on-one dialogue he has worked hard to achieve with our city. Not that the firm isn't good enough, I'm not saying that. It's just consistency is what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Are there any? Councilwoman Overton.
And I want to make a similar statement. I've been here for over fifteen years, and we've met through many attorneys and some not so great. So it's really important that we really try to work with the ones that we know are good and have been really beneficial to us. They have been great attorneys for us. Ryan has been wonderful. He is always there for us, and I would hate to lose an attorney that has, has experience and has learned all of our, our, our needs here. So, you know, for me, I think it's worth the change of dates. And I'm sorry if it interferes in, in, in anybody's, I understand we go through years and know that these dates have always been here, but I've just seen some really bad attorneys over my time, and I really don't want to lose somebody that has been as good as Ryan has been for us.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve the calendar of meetings and adopt the resolution changing meeting dates or give directions to staff on changes to have the meeting, to the meeting dates.
Seconded.
I have a motion made by Councilman Harris and seconded by Vice Mayor Sloane. Do we need a recall or can we?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we've gone to item number ten. Consideration of approving a hiring bonus and referral incentive program for police officers, resolution number twenty nineteen dash fifty-three. I believe Chief White is going to present this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. As you know, the top priority for the police department has been in the area of recruitment and retention. It is quite simply, we can't get our job done without having the human capital within the department to make that happen. When we operate short of our authorized number of staff, it has a direct impact on existing staff, retention, as well as our service delivery to the community. In the past eighteen months, we've hired six police officers and we've promoted additional two to supervisor management positions. Despite our efforts, which have been creative and have extended well outside of our county, we are seeing the impact that other agencies within our region, state, and nation are seeing, most notably with the reduction of the candidate pool of interested officers. We currently have two police officer vacancies, one of which has been vacant for the entire eighteen-month period. In our size agency with only twenty-four and a half full-time equivalents sworn, a single vacancy, let alone two, has a significant impact on the agency. To put it in perspective, the two vacancies represent the minimum staffing that we have on an entire patrol shift, so it's definitely a significant impact. In terms of our existing employees, when we aren't at full authorized staffing, it impacts our ability to grant time off, it requires mandatory overtime, and it also reduces the number of officers that we have to provide backup. This negatively impacts the community in the area of response time to calls, proactive enforcement reduction, and negatively impacting crime rates. Our exceptionally high call volume within the city, as well as our directed efforts to reduce crime and make Clear Lake a cleaner and safer place, is negatively impacted by any vacancies. The significant hiring that's occurred over the last eighteen months will also mean that a number of officers will hit their eighteen-month timeline in close proximity to each other. It's at that time that we tend to see the first time period where officers look at leaving because they have the ability to lateral to another agency, so that's concerning for us at this point. Obviously, an exodus of one, let alone multiple officers, would have a negative impact. Just prior to my hiring, I believe there's an exodus of around seven police officers, and you can see how long it's taken to try to, to try to hire that back. In all of those positions, as I mentioned, we only have two, hoping we also have a lot of new people who are learning along the way, and so they aren't necessarily as effective as an experienced police officer. Hiring bonuses have been, have been used at other agencies for different harder recruit positions like police officer and dispatcher. To give you a perspective locally in Lake County, the county sheriff's office offers a five thousand dollar hiring bonus, Lakeport police officers a six thousand dollar bonus in the form of an academy reimbursement. Statewide, the bonuses go as high as thirty thousand dollars with payments made in various increments. Given our challenging environment and our desire to remain competitive and fill our existing vacancies, we are recommending that you authorize a hiring bonus on a trial basis, including some incentives for lateral officers, as well as establishing referral incentive for the recruitment of police officer. So I'll just go through one at a time. The hiring bonus would be on a trial basis through the end of the current fiscal year. The recommended amount is fifteen thousand dollars, which would be payable in the case of a lateral police officer with ten thousand at the first pay period following the hiring and five thousand following successful completion of the field training program. For an academy graduate, the amounts would be reversed, so they would receive five thousand at the first pay period following hiring and then ten thousand at the first pay period following successful completion of FTO. As I mentioned, this would be on a trial basis, and it would be on a per-position requisition basis. That just means that we have two openings now, but for some reason another position became vacant. Then we would have to consult with the city manager and look at the budget and see if they would support using that. We would also recommend that the city council affirm through the resolution the city manager's authority to advance sick leave or vacation balances to qualified lateral police officer applicants. This is another recruitment incentive that we're seeing other agencies offer, so in an effort to be competitive, we would request that as an option, or I'm sorry, to, to affirm that authority that we believe currently exists. We believe that the hiring bonus would increase the pool of candidates in a system filling the critical positions. Some ideas when you look at the hiring bonus is that we've been recruiting out of the Fresno Police Academy, which is required relocating individuals, so this could help offset some of those relocation costs. It could help with the housing expense for persons who just graduated from the academy, it could offset that as well. To give you a perspective on the amount, well, fifteen thousand, you know, we are very fiscally conscious within the police department, and we also realize that although we take a, a large portion of the budget, that it takes an entire city to be well-funded and all departments to be successful. So we are conscious about the impact, but you should take note that when we hire somebody, the... that when we hire somebody, the training for an academy graduate can easily exceed over $20,000 and take four more months. If we're able to recruit even a single lateral police officer, experienced police officer, that significantly reduces that and results in an experienced police officer being out on the front lines. The other part is that during that sixteen-week period minimum that they're in training, they are paired with another officer, so essentially you're paying for two officers, but you're getting the effectiveness of one helping the street. The second part is a referral incentive, so we have proposed creation of an incentive program, again, on a trial basis to run concurrently with the hiring bonus. Experience has shown, in my own personal experience at other agency, that our current employees are some of the best referral sources that we have, especially in difficult-to-recruit positions. So we're proposing a referral incentive, $1,500, which would be split. The first half would be paid upon hiring of a referred candidate, and the other half would be when the employee successfully completes probation, so an eighteen-month period typically for a police officer. This bonus would not be payable if the employee was involved in the hiring process or if we paid for them to go out and recruit in an academy, et cetera. So it's if they take it on their own initiative, go to academies, go to different functions, and try to recruit people in, then that's when they'd be eligible for it. The most important thing to note is that really we're seeing almost unprecedented time in terms of recruitment efforts. So while we believe these will be effective, it'll take time to bear out whether or not they actually work. However, the good news is it doesn't cost us anything until we actually fill the position. It is important to note that the funding for this would come out of salary savings in the existing fiscal year budget for the police department, so we would not be asking for any other funding from the rest of the city. We'd merely be using money that we haven't expended for already authorized positions in an effort to fill them. So it's a weakly smart use of the money. And finally, it would work towards our council adopting goals to make us a safer city and then to update our procedures to current government standards and remain competitive. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Harris, you have a question?
My one question would be regarding the timeframe in which the new employee, the new officer, were to come on, and if there's been some structure as to what would happen in the event that the officer did not stay with us for a reasonable timeframe.
Right, so as part of the implementing the program through the city manager, we would look at a two-year commitment window. So if they decided to leave in lateral somewhere else or resign on their own accord, then there would be a repayment. We'd likely look at structuring that repayment such that, you know, if they stayed for a year, the overall amount that they owe back to the city would be reduced and so forth. We haven't worked out the exact details on how that would work, but that's...
But based on pro-rations scenario.
Correct.
And then secondly to this, I'm really in favor of this. I just want to say that I would like to see some sort of an incentive given towards the concept of purchasing a home here and staying in our community. So I would like to see a further incentive given for a down payment assistance on a home purchase in the city.
Vice Mayor Sluton?
I want to echo Councilman Harris's suggestion. I'd like to see that part extended to obviously also the police force, but also all the other employees in the city. If they live here, they'll be better employees, and it will reduce people to stay here. So I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. With your questions, I'll open this to public comment. Are there any public comment on this issue? State your name.
Yes, thank you. My name is Roger Joseph. I'm a sergeant here at the police department, and I came to the city of Clear Lake a little over twelve years ago. I came from another agency. This is my twenty-fifth year, but I came from a Northern California agency. And me personally, I've also been a background investigator here for an extended period of time, done a lot of backgrounds of both dispatchers and officer candidates. And I know one of the... We have... We do have a trouble... We have trouble in the city of Clear Lake, like we do across the state, of recruiting qualified people. I think that this would be a great tool to do that because I've seen it firsthand. When I came here a little over twelve years ago, I was fortunate enough that I had savings and I had the financial ability to relocate to Clear Lake because I had nothing here, I had no family or anything. So I had the financial ability to do that. Most of the... A lot of people don't. There are lateral officers that I know that are living paycheck to paycheck, and they don't have the funds to be able to relocate to this area. You have the same issue with new hires. You know, you just spent maybe $6,000 in an academy, and now, you know, you've got to pay that back. So there's... It's compounded when you... And I know as a background investigator that we recruit all across the state from down in Southern California. I've done backgrounds down at the Mexican border, all the way up to Northern California, way up, you know, up near the Oregon border. So we recruit all over the state, and it's expensive. I mean, the move is expensive. So in my experience, I think this would be a great tool.
Thanks, Sergeant Joseph. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2019-53, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake approving the hiring bonus and referral incentive program for the police officer classification.
Seconded. Motion's been made. Do you want to add?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor? So can you provide a little more detail on if you're wanting to take action now on this down payment assistance type program? Provide a little more detail about what kind of amount you're talking about, or is that something you want us to come back with later?
I'd like that to be brought back to us for approval, but my suggestion would be up to $10,000 for down payment assistance.
I think we can add it to this. I'm in.
Okay. Can you do that? All questions left. Discussion. Vice City Attorney, if we can. And just add it to this resolution.
Yeah, it's just increasing in the... Or it's in the recommended amount, but that's fine because it's...
It's still...
It's a whole different scenario. I'd like to prop that with a little more details. I don't want to just leave some comments out there.
Yeah, we'll bring it back. So that concludes my resolution.
Would you state that again, please?
Yes, yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2019-53, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake approving a hiring bonus and referral incentive program for the police officer classification.
Okay, a motion has been made by Councilman Harris and seconded by Councilman Perdok. Do we need a... I think we do. I think I want to do a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdok?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sluton?
Aye.
Mayor Kramer?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
We want the best, you know.
Now we move on to the appointment of the 2020 mayor and vice mayor. We'll open that up to council's comment, I guess, or recommendations.
Councilwoman Overton?
I personally would like to keep the council mayor and vice mayor as is. So I think we've been doing well. Sometimes those changes every year kind of get to me. You know, and plus, our mayor at this time has not had his full term, so I just think it's adequate to just continue on as is.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I concur.
Okay, so what's the motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we continue as Mayor Kramer and Vice Mayor Sluton in their positions for the year of 2020.
That's okay.
We probably need to take some public comment on that.
Yeah, probably. Is there any public comment? What are you laughing about?
Should we reverse that now, like you just did?
Always hear the very...
Seeing no comment, I will bring it back to council for action. A motion's been made by Councilwoman Overton, seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? Motion passes. Well, thank you for your comments, and Vice Mayor Sluton and myself. Hopefully, we'll make you proud moving forward. Okay, let's move on to city manager and council member reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you can see, we do have some construction at Austin Park, which is good. The rain is kind of slowing their work a little bit, but definitely are making progress. We are in the process of ordering a lot of things, such as light posts and so forth. So it's exciting to see the work start and continue in spite of some of the weather we have. A few other just quick updates. You may have noticed a significant accumulation of abandoned vehicles at the old airport property. So a lot of work has been done by coenforcement in spite of lack of Ava funds. And so we're in the process here, in the very short term, ninety-seven vehicles will be scrapped out. So appreciate all of coenforcement's work in continuing to keep our streets as clean as possible. So a quick update on the animal shelter. Our full funding application has been submitted to USDA. Our plans are ongoing, a couple of final adjustments, and should be ready to go out to bid in a couple of weeks, by December thirtieth. At this time, assuming that USDA doesn't hold the process up, construction will be slated to begin towards the end of March. So excited to keep that project moving along. Our city engineer has nearly completed the design work for next year's Measure B projects, which will be Pearl, Emery, and Bolin. We're expecting those to go out to bid the second week of January, with construction starting in April. Also, he's finishing up our chip seal bid or the documents for that. You know, we sent that out last year, didn't get a very reasonable bid, so that'll be sent out again in March with projected construction timeline in June. Although I would add that we've been having some conversations with the county, who does their own double chip seals on some gravel streets from time to time. And so our engineer and public works superintendent are going to be paying a visit and connecting with those folks and seeing if there's a way we might be able to have a partnership to either have them train our crews or work with them using their equipment to do some of that work as well. Been putting quite a bit of effort into developing some partnerships for some fire mitigation projects, working with South Lake Fire Safety Council and Cal Fire to put some agreements together. So looking to take advantage of this winter and spring and get a couple of projects done before the fire season next year. And so we'll be bringing back some more details on that as we're able to zero in on some agreements with them. I did want to point out that I shared with the council there was some stuff in the press last week about the potential for some homelessness funding through the governor's office. And it's been a little bit of a frustrating process. I had a follow-up conversation with our League of Cities representative today. This was... Appears to have been mostly a PR stunt by the governor, and there was not a lot of new funding involved here. Most of it appears was already promised to some of our larger cities, like Sacramento, for projects that they already had in the queue. And unfortunately, it doesn't appear that there's going to be additional funding available to the little guys like us, but we're keeping our eye on it. Just been a real lack of information coming out of the governor's office on this. We were excited there for a minute that there was some additional funding that maybe could support some of the projects that we had in the works. But at this point, I'm real optimistic that we're going to see additional funding anytime soon from the governor on this. We did receive our official letter from the State Housing and Community Development that they have approved our housing element, so that's good news. That was approved by the council several meetings ago, but it takes HCD a while to do things, and it's good to get that final approval letter. Do have an accepted offer for a public works director, which you're anticipating starting work with the city on January the sixth. So that's exciting news, and more information on that gentleman's background will be forthcoming. And the final thing is the... You know, we had a joint meeting with the city of Lakeport and the county early this week related to Economic Development Corporation. Will be having our strategic planning retreat tomorrow, and so I will give you an update on what transpires in that. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Perdok?
I'm always the first one.
Yes, you are.
Thank you very much. Not really much going on. We did have a Clear Lake Chamber meeting last night. Nothing much to report out on that, except I do want to thank Santa and Mrs. Claus for being able to come down and be a part of the Christmas celebration here at City Hall last night. There were some pretty nice pictures and things posted on social media that I appreciated, since apparently the president of the chamber wasn't able to attend. She wanted to be down here and see and probably get an autograph or something, I suppose. We also... I wanted to throw this out. I was also disappointed when I got the news of the canceling of the Christmas parade, but that was a joint decision between the city and the chamber. Because if you haven't seen it, there's a lot of work going on now, finally, at Austin Park. And it would have been, I'm sure, a mighty mess. So I'm reporting this out as a member of the chamber in full support of the city and their decision, just simply because of the lack of location. But I do want to encourage, and I believe the results aren't in yet, for our commercial light competition. But I'm hopeful that the chamber will be rolling that, those findings out soon, so we can decide who the winner of our Christmas light decoration competition has been. And I want to thank all the businesses that participated in that, both city and the council. And then last, from our consent agenda, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Overton for being selected and appointed to the Traffic Safety Committee. And Chief, we look forward to our first meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Perdok. Councilmember Harris?
I've attended multiple meetings this week, but nothing of gravity to report on that. I did want to talk about this coming Saturday. We have the Rotary Community Christmas Dinner that's taking place right here next to us at Burns Valley School, and that'll be starting at 10:00 a.m. For the community to come out, the free meal for anybody who wants to come out and meet Santa Claus. Yeah, he is. He's going to make an appearance there, too. So he's going to be there for giving out a toy to each kid. There's also going to be Warm for Winter taking place there. And then also, between 11:00 o'clock and 1:00 o'clock, we'll be doing the Fill a Fire Truck Toy Drive for Toys for Tots that's going to be in front of Walmart the same day. So if you go and get yourself some food in the morning and then run up to Walmart and contribute to the Toys for Tots program, I would appreciate that so much. And that is it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Overton?
Yeah, I want to start off with thanking our Assemblywoman, Cecilia Agarwad Curry, for the helping with... She donated a hundred turkeys to the center to help provide food to... Councilmember Harrison got some of those to hand out. We give some to Church Over in Upperlife that does the community dinner. I also want to thank Golden State Water Company for... You know, they picked them up and they helped us and helped deliver those. So that was really to give some away to families. And then we also did a kind of a community dinner there at the community center for some people. So I was, you know, very proud that I was able to, again, participate with that. It's always good to be able to help people in need, so I appreciate that. I went to this week, we had the joint meeting, but I also afterwards, the mayor and I went to a PG&E committee meeting with Lakeport and the county to try to see what we're going to start working on and how we want to proceed with the PSPs's. I went to a beginning of a COAB, a search of community... I went to a beginning of a co-op, a sort of community volunteer program to help in disasters, we're trying to see if we have enough organizations that would like to participate in that, so I do hope that that goes through, that just makes it to where our people that are on the ground as far as far apart, and so that other people don't have to do all the work, if we can get this created where people can be in place to help spread out the information and get volunteers where they need to be, and food where they need to be, instead of leaving it all up to just people to try to figure it out, so I hope we can get that, that's going to take some time, as I'm finding out, probably a little more longer than I'd like, but hopefully we'll have something good in place by the summer, when the fire seasons really start hitting us. So, and as Councilmember Harris had announced, we are doing the Warm for the Winter program with the Rotarians Community Dinner, so please come and join us. If it's raining, we will have it in a classroom, we have, I've only had rain one time when I've done it, so, but we've been lucky enough that they will provide a classroom, so if it rains, we're still going to go ahead and continue to do that, so I'm happy to hear that. So hopefully we see lots of people there tomorrow, and enjoying our, or Saturday, and enjoying that Christmas dinner that they always put on us, so great. We will be delivering, they provided a hundred and fifteen meals for us, I think it's a minimum of a hundred and fifteen meals for home delivery, that's how many people we have on our home delivery route, so, yeah, it keeps going up every year. When I first started, it was fifty, now we're up to at least a hundred and fifteen, so I'm a final man for you guys tomorrow, so. Also, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas, I don't want to forget to say that, because we're not going to have a meeting again before then. It's been an awesome year, I think we've been very successful in a lot of the things that we've been forward, with Alan coming on, he's done a great job of moving some of these projects, and doing a little changing so that we can get this whole part done, I mean, that really makes me happy to know that this coming summer, we're going to have a really nice park, so. I present then, our chief bringing us up into the twenty-first century with, you know, technology, someday he's going to have to show me how to do my technology, but, and then all the council members for always being there to support, you know, me and the things that I do, and hopefully, you know, we can continue on this next year in supporting each other, and I really appreciate all of you guys' help, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Overton. Vice Mayor Sluton?
As you all know, I wasn't around for a while, I spent three weeks in Europe, because I had a previous plan there to visit relatives there. In any case, I was fortunate to join one meeting from Strasburg, it was kind of interesting, lacking the notice on the door, and anyway, people were probably wondering what the heck I was doing. Just a little comment, Strasburg is also the seat of the European Union Parliament, so was able to see that, it was kind of interesting. For the rest, I really don't have anything new to report, but I do want to mention that the Rotary Christmas Dinner also includes dental screening and health screening, it has become over the years a total package to help the community, and I'm very proud to be a Rotarian in that regard. For the rest, I don't have any other comments, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sluton. I also am going to pick up a few things that were missed, the Christmas dinner, you picked up on dental materials that are going to be given out, it sounded like a screening, but they're giving out, I think, toothpaste and toothbrushes, and then Dr. Donovan is actually going to, is going to be there. So that's a great thing for us, and I'm also proud to be a Rotarian in that regard, and what we've done, I think Rotary is, gets better every year, it's one of the things. I don't know, did you mention the concrete work at the senior center in your report? I'm not sure you did, that project is also going forward very, very soon, which hopefully we'll have our shower restroom trailer will be on the new slab with the building over it, hopefully in another month or so. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for all of your work on that. I also want to thank Mrs. Claus, and I don't see Mr. Claus here tonight, but-
He's got a lot of work to do, so.
I see, is he getting toys ready for the, to go now? Any rate, I'm sorry I couldn't make it, I had another commitment that I had to be at, and I understand it went over very well, and Facebook kind of shows that. Look forward to the Christmas light competition, see you come out on that, it's great to see that spirit in Clearlake, and hopefully it'll get nothing but better. In addition to the turkeys that Aglar Curry donated to the senior center, Golden State also actually gave the city directly fifty turkeys, which were given out. We worked in conjunction with the Police Officers Association to get those distributed to several churches in the area. Everybody was very appreciative, I wish we would have had more to give out, but that's the way that is. For last, I just want to thank everybody, I want to thank my council members, and certainly our staff, it's been, I think, a very productive year, we've made some great strides forward, and I really look forward to continuing that in the coming years, so Merry Christmas, everyone, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, shoot.
And the year, have a doo-er.
Hands down the last one. Bruno used to sit here, and he used to do that all the time, so I'm just trying to keep that going. I want to thank the city staff, for those who may not be aware, a lot of work within, I want to thank Ms. Watson and Tina for putting together Christmas for Kids, and there is an office space here at City Hall that is full of gifts for kids who otherwise may not get some nice gifts, they coordinated that, put out all the requests for Secret Santas to go out, and it's a wonderful program, you know, law enforcement has done theirs, and this is a community that I think these kids really deserve, I think deserve a good Christmas, so Merry Christmas, everyone, thank you.
Any other new orders?
So, I am going to be doing that Community Christmas Dinner on Christmas Day from eleven to two at the community center, so-
Are you doing anything up to the end before New Year?
Oh, yeah. And, to help sponsor our senior center, we are doing a New Year's Eve murder mystery dinner, so you can come dress up for, you can come, it's set to sixties, it's a rich, richy, marrying a hippie girl, flower girl, so you don't have to dress up if you don't want to, come have some fun, I have tickets if you'd like to purchase them, or you can purchase them at the senior center or online at a gift, right? So, just some good fun, you know, if you want to just come out, it's a perfect gift, too, for somebody who you don't know what to get, this is the perfect gift to go, so, and to support our Meals on Wheels program, so.
Okay, thank you. Don't see any more pins sticking up, so I'll assume that we've said all we want to say here. Moving on to future agenda items, are there any that want to be added, anyone?
No, let's not start the year.
Okay, so we're good to go.
Don't worry, we have a whole list.
All right, well, that concludes everything, again, Merry Christmas to everyone, have a happy holidays, we will adjourn at seven twenty. Merry Christmas.